All right, I have six thirty. We'll call the media to order, please. Can I get a motion into public session?
I'll make a motion at public session.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Devon.
Here.
Mrs. Jeff.
Here.
Here.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, can we rise?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual legal rights.
Comments from the public on agenda items. Just a reminder for those members in the public in attendance, this is one of two opportunities afforded members of the public to comment on or inquire about agenda items. Members of the public may also have an opportunity at the end of this evening's agenda to comment on matters not formally noted in the agenda. We appreciate everyone's cooperation. You can make a comment at boecomments@manans.org. Do we have anybody online? And are there any comments? Approval of the minutes. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District accept the minutes of the March tenth twenty twenty five meeting. I'm going to say with the exceptions of the there were some spelling errors on names.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Resolution passes. We'll move right into the budget workshop for this evening.
So tonight, Joanne and I have prepared and are going to present draft two of our twenty five twenty six budget. We, when we left you last time, we had a little bit of a gap still, a little meeting in relevant terms of about a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. We shared with you that we had a couple of additional areas that were, that were due to be reviewed, that we would look over the past two weeks. We have done so, and we will share that information with you this evening. And tonight's presentation, we adjusted a little bit. So tonight's presentation is going to take a look at, is going to compare where we were for draft one versus draft two. Over the course of the budget season, we had always gone ahead and compared whatever draft we were working on to last year. And in our conversations, we thought it would be more informative if you knew what had changed since last time. We have the history of the presentations. We can always go back and look. And I think what we wind up talking about most when we looked back at last year is the changes from draft to draft. So we felt like that was the most effective use of this presentation. What I will say is that keep that in mind as we're presenting tonight. Keep that in mind as we're presenting tonight because we'll be looking for your feedback on that. Was this more helpful? Or would you prefer to see from year to where, like last year's budget to where we are now? All right. So we always post our goals that we're working on. Both decisions we make always tie back to these goals. So when we take a look at these goals and what we talk about tonight, when we are having conversations about where we need to prioritize funds, it comes back to this. We're looking at where are we in our strategic plan? What are our next steps for professional development? Where are we with intervention services? Are we closing gaps? Those sorts of things. So as we make these decisions, we refer back to these and we have a conversation and that helps to prioritize as we move forward. So this slide is really big picture for you. And this shows you that we have closed what we were thinking for revenues versus expenditures. So last year's budget that we adopted was about twelve point four million, and this year we're looking at about twelve point nine million. And we are now in a position that our revenue matches those expenditures, and we'll talk about where we found some savings on expenditures. Where we found and were able to clean up some revenues and how we increased that as well and why. So you're going to see that our total increase is about four point one nine percent. If you keep in mind that our budget, our tax cap is four point one five. That additional is covered through things like reserves. We cover that through things like our federal grants and things like that. So although it's a four point one nine percent increase, we're looking at our expenditures, our rev, the tax collection that we're going to do remain at four point one five. I will say that this budget maintains everything that we do today. Everything that we do today from teaching positions, continuation of professional development, maybe not restorative practices, but the next step in our strategic plan. It allows us to do all the things that we currently do, including all the extracurriculars. So this draft two update, it includes all the instructional positions that are based on current enrollment. So we continue to look at enrollment. That is something that we will continue to look for. We have maintained instructional positions. And then we will look, we always take a look at our enrollment. For example, Mrs. Trainer is in Mrs. Hall's classroom right now. So we actually have one fewer staff member on campus right now. This budget allows for Mrs. Hall's position to be refilled if needed. We're going to keep an eye, we're going to keep an eye on enrollment, and then we'll make that decision as time comes closer. But those positions are all included in this current budget so that we are in place to be able to staff each classroom as we have currently. We have done a thorough review of all of our BOSEs and special education expenditures. Joanne went through the BOSEs bill with a fine tooth comb. We met probably no less than three times, each time talking about what do we need? What has been our usage? And what should we continue? What do we need to add? The expenditure reduction was really due to that really thorough review of the BOSEs bill. I will also say that it has, was a direct result of student placement and residency changes. We had four students this year in high cost placements that are no longer attending school in the district. So that was, you know, quite a bit of revenue that we were able to back out. And that also allows us to account for new students coming in, but students in, students out, we did have savings in that area. I will say, we always keep an eye on our fund balance because you never know who will move in. But we can't budget based on the maybes. We budget based on who we have, and then we have our fund balance to assist us if we had spike in high needs placements. It includes a continued commitment to repairing and maintaining our campus. So one of the things that I'll talk about tonight is our concrete out front. Not only did we have a look at it and the curves are a little bit higher than our sidewalks, right? We have quite a bit of trip hazard. I would say particularly down by where the music room is. I would also add that after the winter, if you walk up to district office through that crosswalk and then cut across over to the school entrance, that concrete did not fare well this winter. It's crumbling quite a bit. We have not cleaned up the crumble, in case anybody wants to take a look at it, but we do have some companies coming in to take a look and give us an idea of cost. So this budget allows us to do those types of repairs as well. We're also on a furniture replacement plan. We're on our tech replacement plan. Those sorts of things. We haven't walked the property yet with our landscaping company. You know, hopefully we don't have fallen trees like we did last year, but all of those kinds of cushions are built in so that we can continue to maintain the campus. We're able to reduce the transportation expense. Star and Strand has committed to extending our contract for one year for our special education transportation. In addition, final CPI is an output. Mrs. Moran did a look back and was able to get a sense of kind of where we were with CPI. I will say we are still being conservative, just because you don't know where we're going to land. But we were able to reduce the transportation line as well and felt good with also being conservative in that nature. And then in this budget, you will see we are recommending the same level of reserve usage as we did last year. Last year, we set aside about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in unassigned fund balance and then twenty five thousand for ERS and TRS. Those are our two retirement systems, so we're recommending the same for the upcoming school year. I will say the twenty five thousand that we set aside this past year, we have a catch to use. So, and we don't project to have to use it. So being able to set that aside this school year to help be able to do some of these repairs, we think would be a good idea. So I'm going to talk about the three different components. The first one being the administrative component. I think the first thing I will say is that you're going to see increases in some places and decreases in other places. Through the process of going through the BOSEs bill, we had to reassign some of the codes. So for example, supervision and in-service for the training, that's our principals line, right? It's looking at a seven percent increase. There's not actually a seven percent increase. All of our professional development in BOSEs was assigned to program. It should be assigned to this budget line. So it was shifted from one budget line to the other. So when we get to the program component, you're going to see some reductions. Again, it's not that we reduce program. We're getting things in line where they should be coded to and coding them properly. So as we look at this, there was a little bit of reduction on superintendent. We reduced some of the equipment. Again, we did a look back at, a look back at our historical spending. If we're not spending that fifteen hundred, then we shouldn't budget for it. So we did a reduction there. We moved some things out of the business office into a different code. This one was pretty substantial at about twenty seven percent. What I will say, that includes a ten thousand dollar increase in liability insurance that we are projecting. And then it also includes other things on the BOSEs bill that had to be shifted here for that. So it's a twenty seven percent increase, but it's really shifting of budget lines, not an actual spending increase. And then I shared with you that you're going to see an increase of seven percent. The big ticket item there was any professional development that we're getting through BOSEs that should be assigned to supervision and in-service training, which is the principal's office. We made that adjustment and shifted it. So while it looks like an overall increase of six point seven six percent, we did not increase any spending. We just moved budget lines to where they should be properly coded. Some of that occurred here in the capital component as well. So the salary is the first one. That reflects our current staffing at one point three six percent. We've had some turnover in that department. We're back to a full level. So we're looking at about a one point three six percent there. Equipment remains flat. The contractual piece, again, if you look at this piece here, you're going to see an increase of about fifty thousand dollars. That increase is again related to BOSEs expenditures, and that is where it should be.
Not contractual. Contractual, it's only to set aside for the sidewalks.
I'm sorry. There we go. The contractual piece, I apologize. That is to set aside for the sidewalks. The reason we're able to assume that fifty thousand dollars increase that budget line is because of the cleanup of the BOSEs expenditures and also the savings of the special education placements. The next one you're going to see is the electric and gas. Again, there was some recoding that happened in there. For example, our electric, our gas and our BOSEs things, for example, our phone system should be coded here, not where it was coded. So you'll see that that transfer, that transfer happened there as well. And then our serial bonds remain the same. When it comes to program, all of the salaries remain the same. Our salaries are pretty predictable for us, right? Because we know we have a teacher's contract that continues on for another couple of years. So we're very cleanly able to predict what our salaries are. They remain the same. Regular education contractual remains the same. I would bring you down to this regular tuition, BOSEs and textbooks. You're going to see about a forty five thousand dollar decrease there. Again, that is going through the BOSEs bill and reassigning where that goes. We saw increases on some slides there. You're going to see some, you see one of the decreases. When you come down, special education tuition and BOSEs, again, that was some cleanup kids moving out. That was a reduction of seventy five thousand dollars. And then as I had shared, we were able to bring the transportation down by about a hundred thousand dollars there as well. And that is really reflective of being able to have that one-year extension, taking a look back at our CPI and then continue to be conservative for the recovery of the increases. We're not going to see names. We just don't know if that number quite is yet. So overall, you're going to see a decrease of two point six four percent on our program side. On benefits and interfund transfers, many of this remains the same as our last budget workshop. There's one, there's two slight adjustments. The first one being interfund transfer to catheter. We had brought that down and we are now bringing that back up.
Yeah, good.
And that is for two reasons. The first one being all of our COVID money has sunset and some of the, there was a salary in the kitchen, right, that had temporarily been in COVID funding? That has all sunsetted. That's the first piece. The second piece I will say is that there's a lot of unrest at the federal level with our meal programs. So we increased that by ten thousand dollars, not knowing where that is going to sit. If we don't need it, we don't transfer. We don't use it. It's not like a, you know, once it's there, you have to spend it, but we did put that in just because we don't know what's going to happen with the federal funding for school lunches. The state picks up a large piece of that, but we want to be in a position, should that funding go away, whether the state brings it in, versus, you know, is able to pick that up or not, we have that piece in there. And then last but not least, this interfund transfer to special aid. Kids who require high levels of programming that have to be here for six weeks over the summer. That's a lot of our kids who sit in our self-contained classrooms. A lot of that is aided through the state, but we are responsible for a portion of that. And looking at who we have and who's being recommended for E S Y, we're comfortable bringing that down by five thousand dollars. Again, we know where students aren't for E S Y, and we know what our portion and our share will be, and we know what our tuition is now are going to be as well going into E S Y because we have students in progress here. We have students at private placements. We have the kids over at Lord Green, Green Island, so we have a good sense of where that is going to be. So that came down a little bit as well. Do you want me to stop for a moment for questions?
The only question I have is, I agree with you on the cafeteria line. Does this amount of money, you know, for some reason we lost funding mid-year? Do we think this amount of money would allow us to continue to provide free lunches for the rest of the school year? Is that the hope? That by putting this money in there, we'd be able to continue doing that?
Yes. I think what's been formidable, go ahead, Josh.
We get quite a bit of money on reimbursement for every single meal that we serve, whether it's breakfast or lunch from federal government. It may not, the thirty thousand may not cover us till we're operating black. But we may not take such a hit. We can, I can give some more information on that in our next meeting to give us a historical, where we were last year, where we're projected this year. So we have a, you know, real understanding, but it may or may not. It depends on what level.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's right now the state's saying they're going to pick it up if we lose it federally, right? So I'm not that concerned about it. I was just wondering if that was the idea that we're hoping to commit to our families that we'll keep doing that if we can.
We'll be able to. And one of the nice things, as I say that, I would not say I'm sure where it went up at the end of this year. Once we have the answer from the government. However, what I can tell you is that the capital fund or cafeteria fund is operating in the black and has the high fund balance where we're required to spend it. So I'm not worried about not being able to provide free meals into the twenty five twenty six school.
Right. And then if we need to reevaluate it next year, we can, but just looking to get us through this year.
Have enough to do that.
Yep, okay.
I just don't know how much we'll still be in the black.
Right, right.
Do you still have a high participation rate?
Yes.
In breakfast and lunch?
We do great.
Yeah.
I can update that. We can talk, able to with the V three thing.
This past school year, we also added that the kids can start coming in at eight o'clock for breakfast. They used to come in at eight ten. And what we found were, which is a good problem to have, right, the breakfast lines were really long. But then kids weren't having enough time to eat, and we found kids that look, see how long the line was and they just get breakfast. So what we now do with the drivers is, once they pull in at eight o'clock, anybody who wants breakfast, they can unload and it has slowed the line, you know, the length of the line, it's shortened that, and the kids have gotten through. And I think our numbers are probably even higher than they were.
Yeah.
Kids only can get in, get out, and do some breakfast. So.
And I'll do a comparison for last year and this year and see where we are. Reach my value of monthly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions?
As we take a look at revenue, you're going to see there's not a lot of change on our revenue slide. We don't have any new information out of the state. One House budgets have come out. What I will share with the One House budgets, and I'll continue to share, you know, the Senate and the Assembly put out increases, they're aspirational. They can ask for more money and they don't have to tie it to a funding source. We do not expect to see significant changes in our state aid. Maybe we might realize a little bit more here or there, but overall, I feel pretty confident in saying that our state aid numbers are going to be pretty, where, pretty much where they are. You'll take a look and see, you know, the tuition from the other schools, just as a reminder, that's the tuition that we collect in order to run our programs. And then this is where you're going to see that additional fifty thousand. In the last presentation, we did not allocate twenty five thousand dollars to ERS and TRS like we did last year. We added that to this budget presentation. So we are exactly where we were for the use of reserves of last year. So factors that we still need to consider. We'll do a final review of state aid. Like I said, I don't anticipate large changes in state aid, either negative or positive. I think our state aid numbers are about where our state aid numbers are going to be. We have talked a little bit about federal monies. That will always and remains on the table. And for some reason, with, and for some reason, the Department of Ed were to close, and for some reason, those funding sources, even if, let's say, these changes cause a delay, right? Like we do have a healthy amount of fund balance that we could fall back on. And like I said, I would just, as we look into twenty six, twenty seven, say that we need to take a look at that and adjust. I don't know what's going to happen at the federal level, so I don't think that we should make any rash decisions in that. Knowing that if there are changes or delays in those funding streams, we do have reserves to help mitigate those challenges. We will continue to update out of district placements. Mrs. Kozlowski is knee deep in C S E meetings right now. Those meetings will continue through most of April, but what she does is our meetings where there might be potential changes, particularly financially, right? We're looking at changing up placements, considerations of how kids are doing in current programs. She has those conversations to do them later with families. So those conversations are happening now. Some of them have happened. So just kind of keep that in mind. We're going to continue to monitor that. They continue to happen. I can't say that somebody won't move in in three weeks that has significant needs, but we will continue to monitor that and continue to update that, just like we do in a regular school year. But we are in a pretty good place as far as placement, knowing placement knowledge as we can be at this point in time, but we will continue to update that. We will be awaiting the final CPI for transportation. I believe we're expecting that in April. So once we have that, we'll have a sense and we'll be able to have a better sense of what that number will be. At this point in time, we do not anticipate that the final budget number being greater or less than it is today. We feel pretty good about where we stand right now, based on the work that we've done over the last couple of weeks. So we feel good about it, right? But we know it's budget season for the state. We know that there's changes happening at the federal level. These are the two scenarios that we could potentially encounter, right? So if by some way additional revenue is realized, you would have two options. We could increase expenditures or we could reduce the tax line, right? Those are the, always the two options that we have. I think at this point in time, I'm telling you what we do right now is in our budget, right? So we could have the conversation about increasing expenditures, but I do, we can continue to do what we're doing right now. So the other potential would be to reduce the tax levy.
Could we also reduce fund balance?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that we're trying to work that percentage down, but like you said, knowing that
You can.
Given that there's uncertainty, maybe reducing the fund balance might be a consideration too, if you.
That can be a decision that we make as a board, give you different, you know, get to that, that point in time in April where we're ready to go.
Yeah.
You know, absolutely.
Yeah, if that happens. Like we said, we're not expecting it, but.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
It's always an option. We can absolutely reduce the unassigned ERS dollars. Everyone has to do. The second piece will be additional expenditures are required. Something comes up and I come back and say, we're going to need this piece or that piece. You know, we would have the ability to either use more fund balance, reduce money for campus repairs, look for reductions in other areas. You know, so we have some options there as well, and we could have some of those conversations. What does it look like? As far as, you know, elementary sections, so what does it look like for, you know, we could take again a look and say, where are the places that we need to trim? We could reduce them or use more fund balance. We have, you know, we have a couple of options in that area as well. But overall, I don't expect us to land here. At this point in time, I feel really good about where we are with our budget, our expenditures and our revenues. We're in a place where we're not looking at a gap any longer. And we've been able to continue some of the things that we are doing around strategic plan, right? We are offset to have any teachers who have not gone through responsive classroom. They are positioned to be trained. We have brought on our R core reading curriculum. We are positioned to continue that work with the next layer of implementation. Our teachers are looking at a math curriculum. We're in a position to move on math if we need to. There have been updates to our science kits. We're in a position to make sure that we remain updated and continue to move our curricular work. You know, as I had shared, we have completed all of our restorative practice training. All of our staff, they have finished their second year of training. That implementation is well underway and being utilized within the district. So we're well positioned for those things. We're actually considering extending some teachers to some additional circle training. We may facilitate them over the summer. Mr. Druslin, Mrs. Vandenberg are currently going through girl circles. They're signed up for professional development training this spring. So we really are moving in that direction. We are ready to continue to look at goal three. Our D E I committee has come back together. We have some proposals to look at some groups to work with and decide what are our next steps. Because the final piece that I'll say is that next year we will be in for a final year of our strategic plan. So we've worked to set aside money to bring a group back together, right, to decide what is the next phase of our strategic plan look like. We had worked with BOSEs, we had worked with CASDA, we had worked with NISB to do that work, and of course, all of those things come in with us. I think it's great to have somebody come in and facilitate what we have money set aside for that as well. So, you know, we really have been forward-thinking, making sure that we're staying on pace, doing what we said we were going to do, and remaining committed to the things that we said we were going to do. Is there anything else that you would add, Joanne?
Yeah, I would tell you and remind you to bring up that this does, we are planning on bringing pre-K into the school district and taking care of that. The number that you see up there does not include the cost for that salary person. That's going to be covered with a grant and their support staff. The number that we have presented to you today does include the benefits for those staff members that we're going to bring on, because the grant money will cover all of that, but it will cover the staff. And the only other addition I would make, the point that you brought up, Ms. Canabo, is that federal level, federal level funding is one of those catch, that's a tough tough to not know what's going to happen. But what I can say is that our district doesn't put all of that money towards salaries. So we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we use those grants for to offset a portion of some of, two of the gen, gen ed teachers, as well as a portion of one of the special ed teachers. We are anticipating getting that funding based on what has been said. But, you know, and if then that it doesn't come in, well, we'll have to reconnoitre for next year. But again, we will still be okay for this year. We don't put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak.
So a couple of things. I would first ask, what questions do you have? Are there any points that we can clarify for you? Areas that you need additional information? We're happy to go back and go through anything that has going to change from draft one to draft two, or anything you guys say, okay, I saw draft one to draft two, but what did it look like last year?
There were a couple that I saw that I said, oh, I wonder what it was last year, and it might have been helpful to have all three, but it would have gotten messy with like the change numbers and the percentages and stuff like that. So I think doing one of them like this, I felt like was helpful, and then maybe next time, see year to year.
Yeah, I, I don't need it right now, but I do think it would be nice to see the current year's budget. Yeah, and I, I don't know how you do the variances, right? I don't know the cleanest way to figure that out. I don't think you need variances for both, or maybe you do. I don't know, but.
Maybe even like draft one, draft two variance, and then just over to the side for reference.
Something. I think it's helpful.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful. I was going to say even the current year, or last year's actuals, but I, I don't know, I don't want to make work where the results aren't, aren't even worthwhile, because it was an actual, but just if you're comparing like, oh, we're this much higher than last year because it might not be relevant. So I'll, I'll just stay with the current year's budget. Doesn't have to be. I hope it's not a crazy lift that for, for, yeah, for, for not enough results, but that's cool.
Also, we're still in the year, so that might be.
No, it would be last, last year's actuals, the current year's budget, and then the proposed, and then you get a look at three. Again, I'm happy with just the current year's budget.
I appreciate that.
We have the opportunity to, you can look at the appropriations of where we were with numbers last year. If you want to delve dive yourself and, and check out why we're looking at numbers, but.
No, that's why I even hesitated because.
No, I ask. It's, it should be easy enough to see, even if it, the slide has to be reduced or turned or whatever you do on your thing to make it work. A quick question. Summer busing is covered in this proposed budget?
Yes.
And that's, we're good to go still?
Yes.
Is that a CPI thing? We haven't the number on the summer budget transportation yet?
No, that's all part of CPI.
Okay.
We don't know that. That's what the increases kind of.
Last year.
Big transportation number. It's all part of that.
Right. The interest in earnings, was that a full year we did that, or did we jump into interest and earnings partway through last year's? I remember doing the resolution. I remember talking about it.
That was my first year.
Yeah, I think it's been a year and a half.
So it's been a full.
Full year last year.
A full year of earnings. Okay, good. All right.
This, um, this.
This um, this fifty thousand dollar increase in the contractual, is that only for potential for sidewalk? Or is that for completely the grounds as well?
So the fifty thousand overall, I think we're going to prioritize the concrete first.
Yeah.
And then take a look at the additional pieces after.
No.
Um, I don't know how much of the concrete has been across, um, or what our options are going to be for that. But I would say, you know, fifty thousand total, and then we'll prioritize from there.
Oh.
We'll have a better idea of, right? After, we have somebody coming to give us some prices this week, we'll have an idea if we can do more than what we anticipated, do less than a break, I don't know, how many years is it going to take if we can't get it all accomplished at once?
Got you.
There are some significant trip hazards as you um leave the concrete and go to take a step down. And we have, I can't drill holes in the sidewalk again and relift it. Just not sure that's going to work this time, so we're going to have to repair it, um, but that'll be okay.
So looking ahead to our next meeting, April twenty third, that is the night that we are positioned to budget, to adopt our budget. So looking ahead to that presentation, we have two more presentations coming up. We have April twenty third, we're going to adopt. And then we have the full budget presentation in May. And that's where we'll present it from soup to nuts. The library will be here, they'll share their budget. Um, and it'll be in a three-part budget for you, right? So we have those two presentations coming up. No matter what, in May, it is the full presentation um with all three parts. That one is pretty extensive. What we are looking for tonight is looking at April twenty third. We have three levels of presentation, right? We can say nothing's changed, it comes to you with a number, right? That's like the one extreme. We can do a full presentation like the one that we'll do in May, or we can do something similar to what we had tonight, which is, you know, looking at where we've been, where we're going, and have a good sense of, you know, you, you wind up with a final number, but it's not quite as comprehensive as the May date. So I would say last year, we landed in the middle area. But again, we had our first year through budget season together. So this year, kind of what worked for you, what didn't work for you, because that will be our final overall presentation for our adoption.
I think it was laid out pretty well um in this manner, going from draft one to draft two. Um, I kind of like that iterative, just like, okay, we finalized some more numbers. This was looking like before the full presentation, versus sitting through it twice.
Yeah. And we will add that additional side, like where we were last year.
Yeah.
You know, with the draft one, the draft two, your percentage, and then that, you know, column to say, for your reference on the side of where we were.
Got you.
Yeah, I would do middle of the road. I wouldn't do too basic, just because it's going to be our last. You know, again, with a higher percentage, we might start picking up more people coming from the, from the public. I'm not sure if we'll have public in attendance, but if we do, it would be nice to give a little bit more detail than just, you know, even though we got it at this meeting um before we do the adoption.
Uh, I would say if nothing, if nothing really changes, again, I, I'm fine with some even in between the option one and option two, right? Like even if it was a one slide that, that shows everything. I mean, this is broken out nicely, um, but I, I still think it should be, you know? Hey, you got your draft and, and here was last year and, and this is what's up. So I, I'm a little indifferent on it, to be honest.
It could be a little bit more detail, and then if, if nobody comes and nothing's changed, then we go through it quickly.
Yeah.
That's the joy of being a school district and having to come up with numbers before the state and the government, federal. So the state, the state is, you know, they're not, and they're not in a position to have their budget on time. But we need to have ours done before number, number, final numbers come out, right? So that's the joy of being a school district. Um, if by chance the state has a budget in place and we know the number, obviously we have to address any kind of change that hasn't been there. Um, at the federal level, stuff is changing very fast. And if the next three weeks, there's a definite slowdown of what flows downhill, um, then we should address that also, because we'll have those numbers. Um, three weeks is a lifetime right now in the federal government. So if, if any of that changes, we need to address those. If not, I think a standard presentation of where we're at and the numbers we have for expenditure revenue should be enough for the April board meeting.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, so we will require a presentation similar to this. We will add the additional column with where we were last year, so you have that as a reference point. And we'll plan on going for a bold presentation. I do think the pieces, since you don't know what's going to pop online, and it might be their first time hearing from us.
Right.
So, um, we will plan for this little presentation. Uh, are there any other questions? Anything that you would like to know more about as we look ahead to our next presentation?
I'm going.
Maybe in this, uh, because it's going to come out in May. Put a slide back in that addresses the four point one, whatever number we're at, uh, how we came to that number again, so it's available.
It's a calculated tac-tac calculation slide, you mean?
Just so it's up there again.
Do you want the impact on like a two hundred thousand dollar home as well?
Yes. Wouldn't hurt.
We'll, we'll add those two back in. Absolutely.
Also, what I'll do is I'll see if I can get any inside information on where assessments might be, give an idea for anticipating an increase in assessment or decrease, again, to your point, Mr. Evans. That's basically, that's information we need now, whether we don't get it, comes alive. But they may have some idea where we, and that would be nice to find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and you got a second, Jason, you got a minute? Hold on, wait, uh, your workshop's done. Miscellaneous, anybody have anything? You know, it's a quick meeting tonight.
I have a couple. The village has been talking about their budget. It looks like they're going to be at a two point six percent increase. Do I have that right?
Yeah, two point, that sounds right.
Somewhere around two point six this year, uh, which is pretty close to what they have been. Um, so I just have been attending their meetings just to see if it was anything, you know, out of left field this year, and it seems like it's, it's not. Um, also, the play was this weekend, the kids did a great job. I wanted to congratulate them and all the, all the staff and Trish and everybody who worked so hard and, um, it was, it was a lot of fun going to the play. Thank you to everybody for that. Um, PTA has a spring fest coming up in a couple of weeks, uh, April fifth. That'll be before our next meeting. It's a Saturday afternoon. I think that's all I have.
Did everybody make it to the play?
I was there.
Did anybody have children in the play?
I had, I had two.
Not yet.
Not yet, soon, okay. I heard it was excellent. Uh, I saw a few pictures, I was unable to attend, but it was great, so it's great to hear.
Oh, and thank you for the couple of parent volunteers that did the cast party, Vanessa and Kelly, we did that, so.
Just really quick, um, we have some, and they're going to be recognized, is my understanding, at the town level and possibly the village level, uh, some high schoolers who are recognized in Colony and, uh, both South Colony and North Colony schools. Uh, Manans kids throughout here and have gone to high school. Um, Ryan's been recognized a few times already, but again, broke records, has a state and national championship. Um, the town is apparently doing something for him, and I believe the village is going to recognize him for that also. Um, and the Shaker Boys Basketball Team, uh, state champions. Um, I had the privilege of coaching three of the five starters in CYO, and it's great to see that they made it right through. Um, they pulled it out, had a great games, and I believe they're going to be recognized also. So it's good to see the, the, the level of competition that Manans produces when they get to high school. I'm, I'm proud to see that, so. If no one has anything else, uh, we'll move on to public comment. During the public comment session, members of the community may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The board president may limit remarks of individual speakers to a reasonable time. Speakers must identify themselves and a topic on which they would like to make remarks. You can go to BOE comments at manans.org. Does anybody have anything? Mr. Hoffman, does anybody online have anything?
Yeah, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
Great. Anything else, are we good? Does anybody have anything for executive session? I do not.
Nope.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here are adjourned. Thank you everyone for attending. Mr. Hoffman, anybody online?